All right, I'll call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. This is the June 18th meeting. Please, please join me as I read something I wrote for our invocation time. "We're gathered together to make decisions on behalf of all of Apex citizens. We're all blessed to be able to have the freedom in this town of Apex, in this state of North Carolina, and in this country of the United States of America. We gather without fear of an oppressive government, without fear of speech censorship, and without fear of having our earthly possessions confiscated and our family members incarcerated unjustly. On behalf of everyone up here, we wish to thank all those who protect us daily, who keep us safe, who keep us free, and especially those who give their lives to secure our liberty. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, among which are the right to life, the right to liberty, and the right to pursue happiness. And in order to secure those rights, we the people consent to be governed by our own kind. So here we sit tonight as council members, yet also citizens. May we today govern in a way that is fair and just and wise, and may we seek that wisdom from any and every source wiser than ourselves." Please join me for a few moments of silence as we begin. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. There's a few things that I normally say at the beginning, but I'll go through it in case this is your first time here. If you missed the agenda, it looks like this, and it's out on the podium, right outside the door, feel free to go get one. If you intend to speak tonight, there's two things that you need to know. One is, this is your guideline sheet on speaking at the meeting tonight. So if you intend to speak, you need to be familiar with these guidelines, which are also out there on the podium. The second thing is, come up in the next couple of minutes and pick which item you intend to speak at. So if it's a public hearing, make sure you sign the right one. If it's the public forum, make sure you pick that one. I will be calling names from those sheets, so you need to do that as soon as possible. The clerk will be bringing those over shortly. As we have no presentations tonight, we now move to Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda are items that we typically enact with a single motion. They're considered to be non-controversial. If however, any council member wishes to pull an item for later discussion, they certainly may do so. And before I ask for a motion, I will ask the town manager, it looks like we have an add-on agenda item related to the budget?
Yes, sir, all. Mr. Purvis, just to give a five-second executive summary.
And Mayor, the reason we have to add this on is really it's a timing issue, just as the last opportunity we have for budget amendments. This is a project that's been going on since 2016. At the time, the policy was they paid all their fees upfront for recreation subdivision fees. Well, that ended up being, by the time you factor in the credit and then some additions that they had to do to make the Greenway ADA accessible, then we actually had to overpay what the recreation subdivision fees. So this is just that refund of the overpayment.
Okay. Before we go into the rest of it, let me just, on that specific one, see if any council members have a specific question. And I'm happy to wait a few seconds if you want to just kind of look at it.
I have a question. What were the total fees paid by this development? Do you recall?
I don't have it. It was three hundred and some thousand. I don't have the exact numbers.
So is that the net after we refund the 112?
It should be, because then they also built the Greenway. They got credit on the Greenway, so they had fees and then as well as the premium.
All right, are there any other comments, or is there a motion?
A motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the add-on.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Consent Agenda, including the add-on, for approval. Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. And as the town clerk brings over the items, we will move to now set the regular meeting agenda. So this is the time where we establish what we will discuss tonight. I'm not aware of any new or deleted items. So if there are no further comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, no changes. Thank you. We now move into public forum. This is a time for you to address your counsel on any item. If you're here to speak on behalf of yourself, you have the three-minute timer. And of course, we have the red, yellow, and green lights there on the little box to help you remember. I hope you are familiar with the guidelines by now. And we now, I'm looking at the sheet, I have three people. So in order, please come up. Tina Sherman, Anna Lineback, and Carla Zegerman. So we'll start with Tina Sherman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to confirm that the timer's working. Last time I was up here, it was not.
Okay. Town clerk will get that started. Give her the red light.
All right, my name is Tina Sherman. I live at 2251 Toad Hollow Trail. Again, good evening, everyone. On the heels of Father's Day, I was incredibly excited to see that under consideration this evening is expanding the town's paid leave policy. Unfortunately, the proposal offered by Mr. Jensen falls short in only expanding maternity leave. A policy that promotes equality by adding two additional weeks of parental leave for either parent helps to foster gender equity, not only in the workplace, but also in the home. It's been shown to increase fathers' involvement, a more equitable vision of parenting responsibilities, and greater comfort and confidence amongst fathers in their co-parenting skills. Involved fathers promote educational attainment and economic stability. In addition, paid leave for fathers may also increase women's labor workforce participation by promoting men's involvement at home, making it easier for women to return to the workforce and impacting income and retirement security over the course of a woman's lifetime. In addition, it is completely inappropriate for the council to pass policy and for what the appropriate number of children for a family to have might be. In honor of the fathers on the council, in this room and in our community, I urge the council to expand the already successful parental leave policy by adding an additional two weeks of paid leave for both mothers and fathers, and to consider expanding beyond parental, offering paid family leave to all town employees to care for a loved one facing a serious condition, a serious health condition, or their own serious needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Anna Lineback?
Hi there, I'm Anna Lineback at 103 Altair Circle. I live in Apex. I've worked in Apex since 2010, and I'm a frequent customer of local businesses like Common Ground, Salem Street Pub, and Apex Outfitters, too many others to mention. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Pride Month ordinance. I, in addition to being a proud Apex resident, I'm also a member of the LGBTQ community. I know what it's like to grow up in the South, hearing both implicit and explicit messages that people like me are not just different, but defective, that I was not welcome, and that I had to make a choice between being myself and being a full member of the community. I'm so grateful to live in a town that explicitly rejects these messages and instead wants to send a message that welcomes all members of our community with open arms. With this resolution, our town council is essentially saying to people like me, "We see you, we value you, and we appreciate your business and your participation in the community." To the council, thank you so much for your support and for making the peak of good living and even better, more welcoming place to live. Thank you.
May I ask you, Ms. Lineback? And Carla Zegerman?
Hi, good evening. My name is Carla Zegerman. My address is 1661 Salem Village Drive. And I'm here tonight because I understand that Nicole Dozier and Audra Killingsworth will be introducing a resolution about Gay Pride Month, and I just wanted to speak in support of it. So personally, as a friend and family member, and professionally as a mental health counselor, I have been witness to the challenges faced by the LGBTQ community as they strive to exist in environments where they are excluded. Most concerning to me is the emotional toll it takes on individuals who are led to feel ashamed of who they are and struggle to present themselves in ways that might be more acceptable to others. I think especially about our LGBTQ youth, who are quietly suffering and searching for safety and support. I have also had the opportunity to experience the benefits of a home, workplace, and neighborhood where members of the LGBTQ community have been welcomed and embraced. Feeling pride in place of shame makes a real difference to one's sense of well-being. Our town stands to benefit from being free from the burdens placed on a community that suffers discrimination. Let's pass this resolution, and to the members of the LGBTQI community who visit, live, and work in Apex, let's send this message. We accept you, we are proud of you, and we celebrate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zegerman. That concludes public forum, so I will close the public forum. We now move to public hearings. Public hearing number one is a possible motion for annexation. This is number 647, and presenting tonight is Sarah Rayfield.
Good evening. Presenting annexation 647 and rezoning case 19CZ06, located at 3512 Old US 1 Highway, located here in the New Hill area. And this is the parcel here that we're looking at. This petition is being brought forward to you by Benjamin and Emily Brooks, owner and applicant for the property. So it's located over here off of Old US 1. And this is presenting to you the annexation map. So the property is currently in Wake County and is zoned highway commercial, surrounded by other Wake County highway commercial zoning, as well as single-family residential uses and some neighborhood commercial uses down here. Sorry, and the requested rezoning is MORRCC, Mixed Office Residential Retail Conditional zoning, MORRCC. The property is about .86 acres. There's an existing, oh, sorry, whoops. A single, existing single-family residential structure on the house, or on the property. The land use map is office employment, commercial services. This is the 2045 land use map. The MORR proposed zoning district is generally consistent with this land use map. The applicant held a, here's the one I was looking for. The applicant conducted neighborhood meetings on February 11th and May 6, 2019. Those reports are attached. The proposed zoning includes uses that capture the existing single-family use, as well as provide neighborhood and commercial and office employment for future use consistent with the 2045 land use map. Those 22 permitted uses are included in your staff report. I should add, you have a new staff report in front of you as we have a change to one of the zoning conditions, which I will get to you. But the printout is a complete staff report. The conditions, number one, that the existing structure applies only to that, that parking shall be provided to the side or rear of the principal building. The zoning conditions under number two are consistent with our design standards for materials and facade. Condition three is the one that has changed since you last received the staff report, and the language has been changed to read that the density of the property shall be 1.17 dwelling units per acre. This allows this property to maintain the existing character. And just to give you a little bit of history as to why this is coming before us. The applicant, they are fixing up the house. They plan to have this be occupied by family, so the residential use that exists is intended to maintain, but they need to connect to services. So therefore, that is why the annexation is coming before you. And then a rezoning within our zoning district that is consistent with the land use map. So this provides them the flexibility to maintain living there, fixing up the house, and then have flexibility in the future, should it be desired. So Planning Board heard this item at their June 10, 2019, meeting with a vote of seven to one, and recommended approval of the rezoning with the conditions one through two as proposed by the applicant. Condition number three was proposed following the Planning Board public hearing, and again, has been presented to you. Planning staff recommends approval of 19CZ06 with conditions as offered by the applicant, as they are reasonable and generally consistent with the land use map, and also allow for the property to maintain the character and appearance of the area while providing flexibility for future development. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you, and the applicant is here as well.
All right. Does the applicant wish to speak at this time?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ben Brooks. I have a third daughter who is graduate, just graduated from Duke, and just got her doctorate, Laiden with student loans. And she found this farmhouse in March in Little New Hill, North Carolina, and said, "Dad, I'd like you to look at this." And I ended up buying a house for my daughter, so this is the long and the short of it. We have no intentions other than providing her a nice place to live that's within 30 minutes of just about anything in the Triangle. So far, we rehabbed by replacing the existing foundation, leveling the home. We're now doing the structural to the roof. And we plan on just maintaining the integrity of this house and the neighborhood for the foreseeable future. You all can make the decisions on what happens later on. But for us, it's just that simple a decision. I didn't want you to think it was an initial profit motive or anything, whether it was simply a gift for my daughter. So with that, entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant?
Just a quick one. We had talked about just the solar condition. Are you willing to?
Well, I'm certainly willing to entertain it. The three things I thought about after we discussed this afternoon was, you know, I'd love to know the economic feasibility for that older home. It's a 1901 to 1920 er's home, so structurally, right now, the problem on that home would be, you know, trying to implement or install. But if you're talking about other properties in the future, as we talked about, doesn't, irrelevant to my home?
Other structures, other than the one that you're doing?
Well, at this point, I don't have any intention. The only time I would probably build another structure would be if there was an act of God, and, you know, if the home were destroyed. I'd certainly like to better replace the home. But outside of that, I don't have any intentions. Does that answer your question?
Sort of.
I'd be glad to clarify it if you'd like.
No, I just, I just thought that you were looking at if another structure was built other than this one that you?
If it's our personal, I'd like to keep it. But if it's sold, I don't care what happened. Any other question?
All right, thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
And let me just check. Ms. Rayfield, would you object if we did both public hearings, even though there's no one signed up? If we just go ahead and consider the annexation and then the rezoning together? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I'll open and close the public hearing, since there's no one signed up, and refer the matter to council. Looking for, if you're in favor, looking for a motion that includes annexation and the rezoning as presented by staff.
I'll make a motion that we approve both of those.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All right, not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. That's both the annexation and the rezoning. That takes care of public hearings one and two. We now move to public hearing number three. This is a rezoning application CZ, sorry, 19CZ11. And Olive Chapel Professional Park is the name of it. And it's one that we already have, but there's a modification being proposed. Amanda Bunce?
Okay. This rezoning is generally located north of Olive Chapel Road, just east of 540. It's about an eight-and-a-half acre parcel that's currently zoned office institutional conditional zoning. The applicant is proposing to amend the existing zoning district. The property was originally zoned to O&amp;I CZ in 2016. The surrounding zoning is rural residential to the north and east, medium density to the south, and tech flux conditional zoning to the west. That's 540 Flux Business Park. The site plan for Olive Chapel Professional Park was approved in 2017 for five buildings totaling 75,000 square feet. One of the five buildings is constructed and partially occupied. The land use map indicates office employment for this area, which is consistent with the applicant's request. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on May 6, and you have that report. Concerns about lighting levels from both building-mounted lighting and parking lot lighting were presented, both during that meeting, but also were received by staff. The planning staff has been working with the developer on the building-mounted lighting issues since last summer, and the developer has been cooperative with that. And so the lighting levels have been reduced by over half, and staff continues to work with the applicant on that. The parking lot lighting, we determined that the four parking lot lights in this location could be swapped out with lower wattage fixtures, and that has been done, and the lighting levels are within UDO standards. The four acorn lights that were along the entrance drive have been swapped out with four lantern fixtures that are dark sky compliant. The lighting level is still a little too high along that entrance drive, and so after consulting with Electric Utilities and the developer, we've worked out an agreement to remove two of those poles, which should put us at an acceptable amount of lighting that is also compliant with the UDO. Again, the applicant is proposing to add one use to this zoning request, and that is Barber and Beauty Shop. This use was specifically excluded from the original rezoning at the request of the neighborhood due to concerns about traffic. At the June 10 Planning Board meeting, the applicant agreed to add this use to the list of the uses that have an hours of operation limit from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So you will see that included in the conditions in your staff report. All other zoning conditions remain unchanged. In the traffic impact analysis that was provided during the review of the site plan, the traffic for this office park was generated for an 80,000-square-foot general office building development, which is a conservative estimate, meaning it assumed a higher amount of traffic. The TIA review letter is in your staff report, and a barber beauty shop or a similar service would be expected within this type of land use, within the general office building category in the IT Trip Generation Manual. So we can say that as long as the development remains at the 80,000 square feet or less, which it's approved at 75,000 square feet, there should not be any issues with the addition of this use from a traffic perspective. Planning staff recommends approval of this rezoning as proposed with the additional condition offered by the applicant. Planning Board heard this at their June 10 meeting and recommended approval by a vote of five to three with the additional condition offered by the applicant to limit the hours of operation. In addition, the Planning Board further added a note to you requesting that the council review the neighborhood meeting minutes for this rezoning and review the rezoning application for the original rezoning case, which was 16CZ11. You were provided that information in your staff report. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2045 land use map and is reasonable and in the public interest because this additional use proposed will serve as, will provide a service that is beneficial to those working and living in the general area and is, and is of an intensity similar to other uses already approved for this property. In addition, the proposed use can be accommodated by the already approved site plan. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You mentioned the traffic study that was done with this use added back in doesn't have any impact, but in 16, when it was approved, it was removed because of traffic?
That was the concern of the neighborhood. There were certain uses, three, that were removed, that were presented during the neighborhood meeting prior to the submission of the application. They were removed by the developer's representative when the application was submitted, and Barber Beauty Shop was one of those uses. The neighborhood was concerned about traffic. The traffic impact analysis includes Barber and Beauty Shop among all other general office building uses. It doesn't look at it any differently. And Russell Dalton is here to answer any traffic-related questions that she may have.
So the developer is working well with you guys with the lighting concerns that have been, that have been brought up?
Yes, absolutely.
Now, is the parking lot in the town of Apex responsibility? And the building, the developer responsibility? How does it work?
So the lights within the parking lot were installed by the town of Apex and are maintained by the town. So we're fortunate that we're, we have our own electric department and have the ability to make those changes easily.
We received another email not too long ago about the site and being sloppy and not kept up, and I believe I saw a response from somebody on staff about that. Can you go into detail on how they are compliant with our development standards in the site?
So I know our town manager received an email concern back in May, and he went and visited the site and had other staff provide information, and the site was found to be in compliance. We also contacted another staff person in the Public Works Department who said that the site has remained in compliance with the UDO and with development standards.
Are any other questions for staff?
I was, excuse me, out there today, and I was looking at the buffers along the road, and they seemed like they had some gaps in them, holes. And I'm sure they have to have driveways, but it seems to me that the earlier they can get those buffers in, the better off. And I was just interested to know if that?
So is that the buffer along Olive Chapel Road?
No.
Or along Chapel Ridge?
Chapel Ridge.
Are you referring to a landscaping plan being installed?
Yeah, to get it installed ASAP.
So the project was phased, and phase one included this area down here, which we required the buffers to be installed within that phase before the CO was issued for that building. We will ensure that the buffer in, along the future phases is fully compliant with the approved zoning and the UDO prior to the issuance of COs for buildings within those phases.
Okay, well, my thought was, I understand the, getting the buffers when the CO comes in, but it's one big development, and sometimes it's really a good idea to put the buffers in as soon as possible, assuming that you're not going to have to go across the buffer line with construction equipment or something like that. So I was just, when I looked at it, I thought maybe that can be enhanced.
That is something we can certainly request of the developer, but our standard practice is installation of buffers as per phase.
What are those buffers along Chapel Ridge Road? 60-foot?
It was not 60 feet. It was added as a zoning condition. It's a 40-foot type B buffer, both along Olive Chapel Road and Chapel Ridge Road, with preserving as much existing vegetation in the buffer as possible. So that is greater width and opacity than would normally be required by the ordinance.
One more question, I'm sorry. So for comparison sake, just so, so type B buffer, and then what is? I'm trying to think of a shopping center or something that everybody recognized, maybe Costco. What is the buffer along 64 on Costco, do you know?
That is partially a type E buffer and partially a type A buffer.
Type A would be the existing vegetation, type E would be the rest?
So a type A buffer is the most opaque buffer in our ordinance, and so we do require existing vegetation. existing vegetation, anything basically over two and a half or two-inch caliper to be preserved, and then supplemented as necessary to meet the standards of the ordinance for that buffer type. So, A would be the most opaque with both understory shrubs, mid-level trees, and large canopy trees, ensuring that full screen as the vegetation matures. B allows a little bit more visibility and is slightly less opaque than the A. So, trees can be a little bit further apart.
So, Costco is a partial type E and type A, you said?
Yes, and I believe that was during the major site plan review or the subdivision review, that was a standard set at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Does the applicant wish to speak before we open the public hearing? So, as normal, the applicant is allowed up to nine minutes to make their presentation. So, please state your name and address for the record, and then you can begin.
Good evening, council members. My name is Patrick Kiernan, Jones &amp; Conosson Engineering, 221 North Salem Street, Suite 001. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Olive Chapel Professional Park LLC, for this rezoning request to add barber and beauty shop to the list of allowable uses for this professional park. Thank you, Amanda, wherever she went, for your presentation. Before I get into the details of the use itself, which Amanda did a great job of explaining, I'd like to take a minute to elaborate on one of Amanda's points regarding the original 2016 rezoning and the request from the neighbors to exclude this use. I understand that optically speaking, this rezoning is controversial because of the original intent to exclude this use due to traffic concerns as well as hours of operation. I will try to offer our defense against these concerns in a moment. But first, I just want to make a point about intent, because I feel it is hugely important in this discussion. I'm not arguing the fact that this was asked to be removed in the original neighborhood meeting, and at the time knowingly done so by my predecessor who represented the developer in the 2016 rezoning. What I will argue, however, as strongly as I possibly can, is that the developer himself did not realize this. Either A, they were never told or made aware that this use was removed, or B, maybe it was relayed, and under the massive undertaking of this project, that one small detail was lost in the shuffle and forgotten. Keep in mind that these are not professional developers who know the use table like the back of their hand, and are used to these sometimes strenuous rezoning processes. It does not seem far-fetched to think that out of 20 or so uses in an allowable uses list, that they didn't have it perfectly memorized or understand exactly what storefronts fall under each use category. I'll get to this in a minute, but they honestly did not know that barber and beauty shop was its own separate use. Now, this is all my own understanding of how we got to where we are. I was not here at the time. I cannot factually confirm what exactly happened. What I will tell you, based on my conversations with the developer and with the original engineer, is that there very clearly was a fundamental misunderstanding when it came to this use specifically. When I reached out to the original engineer to ask him about the history and tell him about this rezoning, he was confused as to why they wanted to rezone for barber and beauty shop in the first place, saying something along the lines of, "Why are they doing that? I didn't think they had any interest in a barber shop or a beauty salon." This is absolutely the crux of the misunderstanding or the miscommunication between my firm and our client. When I relayed this message from the original engineer to our client, he was very surprised to hear that response, saying, "Well, hang on, we've been advertising for this use all along. We 100% thought it was in our list of allowable uses because we thought it was included within personal services." Now, for reference, the personal services use is defined as "an establishment primarily engaged in the provision of frequently or recurrently needed services of a personal nature." Without knowing that barber and beauty shop is its own separate use, could you not see how a barber shop or a beauty salon could easily fall under that category? Recurrently needed services of a personal nature? Now, the obvious counterargument here is, who cares? Whose fault is that? And that's completely valid, because this is 100% on us. Our firm did not do our job in communicating a very important detail to our client three years ago, who was a first-time developer. The developer will gladly own up to his own mistakes in not knowing which uses are allowable and which are clearly not. This is a problem. I know this is a bad look. I'm not making excuses for the fact that we, meaning my engineering firm, as well as the developer, dropped the ball and made a mistake. I fully acknowledge those mistakes, and I'm not offering this as the reason for why you should or should not vote for this rezoning. I just think that when the only alternative for why we are here is that we and the developer have been unfaithful or intentionally deceiving or trying to pull a fast one on these neighbors, I just want you to know that this is not nor ever was the intent. The last point I'll make on this before diving into the traffic and hours of operations is how this all came to light. Now, because they had been advertising for a beauty salon in Olive Chapel Professional Park, one came into the picture who was an absolute perfect match. The owners of Maeve Salon are here tonight and will surely prove to you why this is exactly the sort of business that we want here in Apex. Now, when they came into the picture, our client did not tell them, "We'd love to have you, we just need to go through a rezoning at first, and oh, by the way, it will be very controversial." Instead, they hired attorneys to draft up a lease. They contracted an architect to outfit a space specifically designed for their salon. They spent months, as well as thousands of dollars, on this lease because they truly did not know that they were not zoned for it. When the owners of the salon applied for a certificate of zoning compliance and were denied, everyone involved was completely shocked. Our client was horribly upset at the position that they put these nice folks in. This is what has prompted us on this rezoning request, and this is why we are so diligently fighting for this one simple use to be added. If not for this innocent couple who was caught up in the middle of this, they would accept the misunderstanding for what it is, and they would halt their advertising that this use is allowed. Instead, we're fighting strongly for the addition of this use because despite the reasons that were given three years ago as to why it should not be included, we feel adamant that those concerns can be put to rest. We have reached out to Russell Dalton, the transportation engineer at the town of Apex, to talk about trip generation of specific uses, and how barber and beauty shop may affect the original TIA. His response is that, "There's no evidential way to quantify the increased traffic from this use, because it is a specific use that falls under the more general use category of general office use," as Amanda stated. The opposition can speculate that it will add traffic, but with an upscale beauty salon, I think the easier argument is why it could also decrease the volume of traffic, especially at heightened times of the workday. While I sympathize with the huge increase in traffic in this area over the past few years, I think it is unfair to pinpoint this one specific use as a root without evidence to back it up. For the concerns raised on hours of operation, it was, as Amanda stated, it was recommended by the Planning Board that the same restrictions be placed on this use as are in place for all other retail uses in the park, which is 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Our client was happy to compromise on that, so we offer this rezoning with that condition in place. In summary, it's my belief that this debate tonight has come down to more, has come down more to precedent than the actual use itself. I do not want to put anyone in an uncomfortable position, but the fact of the matter is that this was an honest mistake, and no one had any malicious intent. It's not that we knowingly removed this use three years ago in order to sneak this rezoning past, only to then, a couple of years later, try to sneak it back in. I agree, that would be very dishonest. To be frank, I would not want to do anything with a developer that operates like that. I'm terribly sorry for our part in the controversy. I apologize to this council, the Planning Board last week, the town staff, and our client. Most often, I apologize to these neighbors and to the owners of Maeve Salon, as they are the innocent citizens who are caught up in this drama and in our mistake. If you can see past this unfortunate misunderstanding and see the use itself for what it is, I think you will agree that is a fitting addition, but mostly that these business owners are exactly who we need to be staying in Apex rather than taking their business elsewhere. As Amanda stated, the planning staff and the Planning Board have each recommended approval on this, so we ask that the town council approve this rezoning. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kiernan. In the interest of not dragging this out, I will say, though, it's an opportunity for council to ask a specific question to the applicant, if you want, but I would like to get to the public hearing, and I will give Mr. Kiernan an opportunity at the end of public hearing if you want to wait. So, I just wanted to say that out loud. All right, we'll call you back up at the end, Mr. Kiernan. So, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and I'll start with the first person up here, Rita Boykin. And as you come up, Ms. Boykin? Where's Ms. Boykin?
We need to start in that order.
That'll be fine. Ms. Kane, I remember you. How are you?
I'm good.
All right, so, we'll start with Ms. Kane, but normally I do go in order, so this is kind of an exception. Ms. Boykin, when do you wish to go? Okay, all right, so we'll just swap the first two. All right, very good. And Ms. Kane, you have three minutes.
My name is Ann Kane. I live at 1401 Barnside Lane. I'm within 300 feet of the development. From the start, Olive Chapel Professional Park was presented to Apex and to the surrounding property owners as an upscale professional park for doctors, lawyers, and similar businesses. At that time, the town council felt this type of commercial development was needed in Apex. At the neighborhood meeting on April 1st, 2016, the developer presented a list of uses for the spaces in the office park. Although the neighbors preferred residential use, we discussed commercial uses and requested that uses outside of regular business hours be restricted. We asked for uses which would not involve traffic at night or on weekends. Restricting a beauty shop was not a mistake or oversight on the original request. The rezoning request submitted to the town council three days later stated the following changes have been made as a result of the neighborhood meeting. Quote, "We have removed several uses from a list of allowable barber and beauty shop, floral shop, and funeral home due to concerns about traffic," end quote. In the same document, the developer also said that the uses they included would have peak use times during the day and not at night. This is not the case with the beauty shop, which has clientele after office hours. The April 4th rezoning request, which included these statements, was signed by all four of the Office Park LLC members. So, they did see it. After consideration of the rezoning proposal, the town council limited the office park to 18 uses and further restricted the size and the hours of operation for restaurant, newsstand, or gift shop, pharmacy, personal service, and health and fitness center, or spa, to 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. These uses were to benefit the office park tenants and not the general public. The currently proposed barber and beauty shop use is a much different use than was planned for the professional park. Doctors, lawyers, and other professionals typically work Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. Beauty shops cater to clientele after business hours and on weekends. Doctors usually have one doctor in 2,000 square feet. This beauty shop has proposed six operators working in 2,000 square feet. Beauty shop is a retail use and does not support the professional park name and intent. This rezoning request opens doors for barber and beauty in all five buildings and larger salons as well. If this request is approved now and the office park and developers find another prospective tenant whose business is not on the list, they could request another change and use this as a precedent. We do not want to be back here again in six months. Finally, there are two other hair salons within a mile from this development. We don't need this use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Ms. Boykin? And as you come up, I see that you've marked that you're representing four or more people who are present?
I am.
All right, can I see a show of hands of all those who Ms. Boykin is speaking for tonight? All right, very well, thank you. Ms. Boykin, you may have nine minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Rita Boykin, and I live at 1500 Clark Farm Road in the Chapel Ridge neighborhood. This evening, you will be listening to two sides of a rezoning request. I ask that you listen with an open mind to both sides, theirs and ours, before you decide how to vote. Ann spoke with you specifically about reasons for our opposition to the addition of a barber and beauty shop. I'm going to take a different tact. One of the responsibilities of the developer is to know what is and what is not allowed in their project. And because of this developer's negligence in telling Maeve Salon that they could lease at the office park, they are now requesting the addition of barber and beauty to get them out of their predicament. The concerns we had regarding the allowable uses in 2016 are still viable today, if not more so, especially when it comes to traffic and safety. Hempstead uses Chapel Ridge Road as a cut-through. Sometimes they drive the speed limit, sometimes they don't, they speed. This is not limited to cars, but delivery trucks and construction trucks that use Chapel Ridge Road instead of Hempstead's primary entrance at Beaver Creek. And now, we have a church that is going through the process of purchasing property at the end of Chapel Ridge Road, which means the potential for even more traffic. So, we come to the real issue. Signed on March 29th, 2016, is a petition to amend the official zoning district map, which includes an agreement that specifically states allowable uses. This agreement was knowingly made between the developers, the town of Apex, and surrounding neighbors to limit the use of property to less impactful businesses. Now, those same developers wish to change that agreement due to their own fault, pardon me, due to no one's fault but their own. They need to abide by their original agreement. We are also concerned that this rezoning request will just be the first of more rezoning requests that they may petition for in the future in order to fill empty office space. The developers may say this is not their intention, but we're not that gullible. We feel this way because developers have not always acted in good faith, nor always acted as a good neighbor. A developer who apparently does not take enough professional pride and responsibility for the appearance, maintenance, and construction issues of all their property in a timely manner, if at all, is one I believe will come before the town of Apex again to request rezoning. Our neighborhood was opposed to office to Olive Chapel Professional Park in 2016, and we lost that battle. It's been three years later, and we are still dealing with issues concerning this office park. Let me start with the neighborhood sign. In 2004, we replaced an aging neighborhood sign at a cost of $2,400. In 2017, John Gazarovski let the neighborhood know if we wanted the sign, it had to be removed in less than a month. The cost of removal was $3,750. John paid 500. We paid 250 each. Did the office park put their own sign at that location? No. Have they removed the concrete base or improved the surrounding landscape to make the entrance attractive? No. It looks like it did right after we removed the sign, only worse, because they have not maintained that section of their property. They just wanted our neighborhood sign gone, one way or the other. Good faith? Good neighbor? If their intention was to be a good neighbor, why weren't all their neighborhood meetings extended to the entire neighborhood instead of only those living within the required 300 feet of their property, since the construction and the development would be impacting our entire neighborhood? There was never a direct meeting between the developers and the surrounding neighbors. Meetings were always conducted by their engineering firm. I personally recall only one meeting in which one of the developers was present, and that was in 2016. And then, there are the construction issues. Construction workers would often park straddling Chapel Ridge Road and the roadside, which narrowed the travel lane. Even after the sheriff's office was called several times and visited the job site, this practice would sometimes continue. They had over eight acres of developers' land to park, but the acreage was never utilized. Will this be the case in the future? Probably. There had been additional potholes, mud, rocks, and gravel on the road that should have been cleaned up by the end of the workday? It wasn't. Delivery trucks turning around on Barnside and Clark Farm when they were not even supposed to go that far into the neighborhood. Additional drainage issues on Chapel Ridge Road. Trash. The grass was not always cut. It's interesting, though, that it was cut before the Planning Board meeting and this town council meeting, but they still didn't cut the grass on the roadside between the construction trailer and the end of their property. There was a love seat that a construction employee just couldn't park with, so he placed it beside their construction trailer. We complained, and yet it was almost a year before it was finally removed. The office park shares a pond with one of our neighbors. I have photos that I'll share. There has been an ongoing problem with soil and erosion failure, at times overwhelming the silt fencing. The retaining area had failed. Was there supposed to be a retention pond on the office property to help prevent this from occurring? The pond has been muddied since 2018, and though Apex has been contacted several times concerning this issue, twice this year already, even with repairs, the problem persists. Which brings us to the present. brings us to the present. The first unit was not built to UDO compliance concerning building lighting. Their building lighting was twice the allowable amount of Apex UDO. It was unreal, the amount of light that unit gave off. This was brought to the attention of Apex in August of 2018, and in April of 2019, the developer completed initial changes. That took nine months, but not before a nearby resident moved due to the excessive lighting affecting the quality of life in their home. There are still survey flags that they haven't even removed from the area between Olive Chapel and the entrance to their office park, pink and blue streamers just hanging from shrubs. Surely, they are no longer needed. The wood fences in disrepair. There are culverts, stacks of brick, and large concrete blocks on the inactive construction site, and one big pothole at the entrance to the second driveway. We realize that this is a work in progress, but it's been three years, and only one unit out of five has been built. And at this rate, it looks like we'll be dealing with construction issues for some more time. We live here. The developers don't. They moved to Chatham County. These are our homes, where some of us have been living for 30 years or more, give or take a year. It's an eyesore to our neighborhood, and one we've had to deal with on a daily basis and apparently for the foreseeable future. We may be a small neighborhood, but we take issues with this development seriously. The planning board asked us last week if we contacted the developers directly with any of our concerns. One person emailed the website twice with no response. I personally contacted the town of Apex, DOT, and the construction manager on site, not to mention those delivery truck drivers. Last Thursday, I asked Patrick if he would obtain the developer's contact information, preferably an email address, so we can contact them directly with our concerns. At this time, I have not received a reply. In summary, the developers want another tenant, in this case, a salon to help them get out of their predicament. We oppose the rezoning change for a salon because it was purposely omitted three years ago with reason. The developers knew this. We have no confidence that this rezoning request will be the last. Thank you. I have some handouts, some photos. I have a, well, this is the whole petition, but I pulled out some of the key points and highlighted those for you. May I bring them up?
Yes, feel free to hand them to the clerk, and she'll make sure we get them. Thank you, Ms. Boykin. Douglas Weaver?
Can my wife and I both approach at the same time?
Yes, if you want to share your three minutes, that's fine. So Douglas and Tiffany?
Right.
All right.
Last time we saw you, sir, was Halloween evening when you pulled up with your police escort right outside our house, and we had to hide all our beer cans. So, good evening, everybody. My name's Doug Weaver. This is my wife Tiffany. We've been North Carolina residents for about five years, and we've gotten ourselves into a predicament, and obviously, we're now standing before you. Quick background between who we are. My wife Tiffany has been in the hair industry for about 20 years, myself. I went to school at SUNY Cortland, went in the military shortly thereafter, spent about nine years in there, and getting fixed now. We find ourselves at a particular point in our life where we can actually financially and with our family support pull off our life dream. For me, that's owning a small business. For her, it's owning her own business. It's female-led, veteran-led. We've put our heart and soul into this up to this point. We think we're going to be launching a great business, and it's in line with all the characteristics that you would want in Apex. You know, we want to treat our employees well. We want to pay them a couple of points more. We want to provide a livable wage, a flexible schedule. A lot of these things you only find in Fortune 50 companies, which I work for, right? We want to bring it down in the small business. And pardon me, a little bit nervous, didn't expect to be doing this at this point in my juncture of life. But regardless, is, there's a couple of different characteristics. We think well of ourselves. We think that we're good contributing members to this society, and our business will reflect that. We picked Olive Chapel Professional Park because of its appearance, and also, our relationship with Will and John has been nothing but top-notch, and I found them to be completely open and honest individuals. And actually, we thoroughly enjoy our interactions. But back to the business, is that, yeah, we're willing to curb our hours. On weekends, we're willing to eliminate Sundays, and on Saturdays, limit the hours there to accommodate all the concerns that the residents have. We have no issue with that. Our thing is this. There's a problem, but we're not part of it, and saying no, in our eyes, it does prove a point, but we're the casualties. If we don't lease that space, somebody else is going to, and no harm, no foul to the developers. And I don't mean that in a bad sense. They're great upstanding people, and also the builders themselves. I don't know if my wife wants to say anything while I collect myself, and still got 40 seconds left.
I just want to thank you for your consideration. This is definitely, it's definitely a dream of mine.
Yeah. And as mentioned before, we are trying to source as much local as we can. Our marketing right now, we've got stuff going on with fellow Belacasa residents, locally-owned businesses. The only items that are actually coming from, including the construction of this place, are the specialty items that you need for a hair salon that just are not locally manufactured. So with that said, I think we hit all the high points, and we just appreciate your time and consideration. We just hope we aren't the casualties of somebody else's problem, and I mean that sincerely, like.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you.
All right, John Gazarovski?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to come up here and try to defend ourselves with a lot of the things that Mrs. Boykin said. You know, we wish that we could put 100% medical and legal and attorney offices into Olive Chapel. The unfortunate thing is, is that we're limited by the town of Apex because of parking of only 30% medical. And we do have to take a look at potential tenants in there that will fill up the space, and we felt that the beauty salon was a perfect fit for Olive Chapel Professional Park. Mrs. Boykin also stated that there's two other salons around. Well, there are, but they don't really, there's sports clips and another, they really, their business is more towards men and not for women. This is a very elite salon made for women. Doug and Tiffany were really kind on coming up here and presenting their case. Yes, it's the developer's fault to where we are today. I can honestly tell you that we had no idea, going through the processes that we went through with the town, until we found out for the zoning for the usage, that we weren't able to put a beauty salon in there. And as Patrick stated, we spent tens of thousands of dollars for legal work and architectural work to get that. If you could see the floor plan, it's a very elite beauty salon. There's a lot of experience in there, and I think it would only enhance the opportunities for the residents of Apex to utilize it. Taking words from Councilman Jensen, this is a perfect example of having a resident that lives in Apex, works in Apex, and will eat and play in Apex. And the concern I have is, is yes, if you don't approve this, they'll set up shop in Cary or Holly Springs. The other thing is that there's about 25 or 26 emails that were sent to all of you on positive reactions of the salon. I know we have some neighbors, and quite honestly, Ms. Boykin, we'd never received any kind of emails on our website from you. I would embrace the fact to be with the neighborhood and to talk about how we could resolve these issues. Divisiveness doesn't get us anywhere. We embrace the opportunities to be with the neighbors, to try to sit down and talk and discuss, and to be informed about the things that we can do together to make this opportunity grow for everybody. Our success is really the community's success and the town of Apex's success. I am a local developer. Yes, I am a neophyte in this, and we are finding out that there's some steps that we have to take that if I was going to do it over again, I'd probably think twice about doing it over again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gazarovski. Diane Henson?
Hi, I'm Diane Henson. I live at 1400 Barnside Lane. This is a simple rezoning request, I suppose, but if approved, we strongly feel that it will chip away at the desirability and property values of our homes because of the type of traffic that it will bring in. From listening today, I understand, or I'm hearing, that this was unknown by the developers and that they're neophytes. We are all neophytes at this, too. We've never fought anything like this before, but it was made clear to us that the beauty shop, barber shops would not happen. That was taken off. So perhaps, a fast one wasn't the intent, but it feels like a fast one for those of us in the neighborhood. When rezoning happens, it feels like that's a covenant between the developers and the town, between the neighbors that are impacted by that, and it just seems that that shouldn't be allowed to change because a misunderstanding happened. We in the neighborhood ask you, please, to try to help and preserve our homes. I've lived there for 26 years. We've raised our family there. We have our grandchildren there. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Henson. With that, I'll close the public hearing, but I will ask Mr. Kieran if he wishes to have a closing remark after the public hearing is, now that the public hearing is closed. Did you have anything you wanted to add? Anything new? Okay, all right. Thank you. Yep, okay.
Just in response to...
Right, it would be in response, right?
Right, yes. She did, she did contact me last week.
Okay.
That's probably more on me than anything. I've been out of town, and our full intention is to provide a list of her. Spoke with the client. He has told me verbally all the different people that he was going to include in an email. We just haven't quite gotten there. I just don't want it to feel like we were skirting that or anything, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kieran.
Thank you.
So I'll close the public hearing now, refer the matter back to council for discussion leading to a possible motion.
I have a question. Patrick, can you provide some history on that sign that was referred to for the neighborhood and being moved, and was it, there were some dollar figures quoted. Can you provide details on that?
For the Chapel Ridge sign? I do not know really enough about it to speak on. I'm sorry.
The operating hours are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the park, right?
For the retail uses. That was conditionally stated originally, yeah.
Okay, and the barber shop fits into the salon, which fit into that?
Yes, yeah, it will, the specific one, yeah.
Would, would you guys be willing to, I think it was mentioned, closing on Sunday? Is that something that is going to be offered, to close on Sundays?
Um, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
All right. So matter is still at council. Is there, is there any further discussion?
I guess I have a question of staff. If this rezoning were, could this rezoning be set up so that they could only have one salon? It sounds to me, from what the neighbors said, they could have a salon in every building if we do this.
That would be up to the developer, but that would be enforceable in more than one barber, beauty shop use.
That could, in other words, you're saying that could be an acceptable condition if offered by the developer?
Correct, because we require a CZC for uses as they come in or change, and so we would have the ability to track that.
Okay. Well, hang on one second. I just want to check, does that sound okay? I mean, sorry, I saw you looking over, I think Diane, but is that, or?
I was just, you know.
Oh, just generally that direction?
Just making sure.
Okay. But that, that sounds like it could be a condition that would be acceptable and enforceable if offered by the developer?
It sounds like it could be.
Okay. Mr. Gazarovski, if you don't mind, I'll ask you, is that a condition you're willing to offer?
No, what we would do is we would make most salon exclusive to the entire, entire office park. We would only have one.
Okay, so I think that's what was being asked, right? Is a maximum of one for the entire property?
Yeah, and we would concede to just having an exclusive with more salon.
Okay, all right. All right, and if I could rephrase that, you're offering that as a condition?
Yes.
Okay. Amanda scribbled some words down here to make sure she's got that. Oh, did you have a?
Yeah, I do. So while we're into this, I wanted to raise up some other concern. Mr. Gazarovski, I'm speaking to you.
Yeah, sorry. So, Mr. Gazarovski?
Yeah.
I think council member...
Is it okay for me to address him now, or you were just...
Do you have a specific question directed to him about?
Yeah, a question that was asked, and I didn't get an answer to, related to the monument or the sign, and so I just wanted to see if you had an answer about that.
Okay. If it helps you get to a conclusion.
Well, I think that was Mr. Mory's question, and we didn't get an answer to it.
I have my general contractor here.
Just trying to get at the concern.
I think it was, I think it might have been a...
We didn't get an answer.
A sign-location ordinance by the town of Apex.
I'd have to, my name is Kenneth Dickinson. I'm the general, representing the general contractor. I'd have to yield to Mr. Kieran and perhaps Ms. Kane. I believe that if it was not removed, it would have been considered an off-premises sign. It had to be removed in order to comply with an ordinance, so.
Thank you.
Is that what you mean?
Sort of.
Okay, all right.
While you're up here, sir, are you finished with your questions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just was making sure that we were, I think we were kind of going left on.
May I ask?
It's okay. I wanted to make sure that, I wanted to make sure that you got
Oh, yes.
the answer you were looking for, or at least got a response.
I got a response.
Okay.
Okay. As I mentioned earlier, I was out there, and there are holes in the buffer along the way where future buildings are going to be. It seems to me that to make this more compatible than the neighborhood, you'd want to put in the buffer all the way along prior to the buildings going up.
This is all new to me, and, you know, we're just following the procedures and regulations of our permits. I will, if you want us to put a buffer in those particular areas prior to that, I'd do that for the council.
And if I could maybe reword that so that I think it'll make more sense. If you're offering to go ahead and landscape the buffer as for the remaining piece parcel, even before it's required?
Yeah, we would do that as long as it doesn't interfere with the construction equipment that comes in and out of there. Yes.
All right, okay. And we're just talking about the buffer?
Yes.
So, so if, let me, let me check with, if that's where you're going, I want to make sure I'm helping direct it. Okay, so I want to give staff a moment to process that.
And we also, with Councilman Jensen's help, we were also able to put out, put landscape into the facility, into the location even prior to us getting the permit for landscaping. So we did move a lot of trees into those particular areas. We have no problems in trying to assess a particular buffer for whatever conditions you feel is necessary.
All right. If everybody could just hang for a second, let's, let's staff process this, and I want to wait.
Are you talking about near the second, second driveway?
I'm talking about the whole thing along there. There's so many spaces and stuff like that.
So we are not sure about utility and infrastructure work that still needs to be done along there. Typically, you would not want to plant a buffer and then go back in and rip things out for areas where utilities or infrastructure work needs to be done. So maybe the engineer could comment on that. I just, I'm not familiar enough with the site plan to be able to know if that's a feasible condition or not.
I was thinking, there's the water one on Chapel Ridge, but there's additional utilities. 18 and 2, another one.
So AT&amp;T, another one.
How much dirt is that?
Go through the line.
Is there a lot of dirt in that block here?
There is currently, from a, from a logistics, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Dickinson.
From a logistics standpoint, I think originally Mr. Gazarovski agreed to install the buffer before we commenced phase one of the multi-phase development, and I think the concern at the time and the reason Mr. Gazarovski installed the buffer when he did was weather. And I don't know that it'd be prudent to install the buffer now. Everything would die, obviously, given the, the weather, so perhaps if the buffer is an issue, then the council will give Mr. Gazarovski time to make that installation, and we can work with Diane's office to find out the best time to accommodate that request.
Mr. Dickinson, from the utilities perspective, I heard you discussing just a little bit, and I wanted to get closure on that. Is it, do you have an assessment, or Mr. Kiranen, I'm not sure, do you have an assessment as to whether or not the utilities would be a major disruption to anything planted?
Utilities will go through a portion of the buffer. For example, Time Warner and AT&amp;T will need to get their services to the buildings. Typically, they have a dedicated path. They'll go straight from the right-of-way to the building, and unfortunately, they like to take the path of the shortest path, which will be straight from Chapel Ridge to the building, and anything planted in its way will need to be removed or it will be disturbed.
But to be clear, that would be orthogonal to the direction of the road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be, there, there may be some disruption, but it would be limited. It wouldn't be the entire length.
Correct.
Is that what you're, okay.
Yes.
I want to put words in your mouth.
You're correct.
That sounds like what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay. So if I could wrap some closure around this, it sounds like if Mr. Gazarovski's willing to offer a condition with this, that he have, I don't know, it's June, July, August, September, maybe...
Has to be December, probably.
Four months or so to install the buffer along all of...
I'm sorry, if I can interrupt. I've seen where they've tried to establish buffer, and as they said, the things die.
Mm-hmm.
So realistically, I think we're probably looking at October through January.
We could say six months. I mean, would you, I'm just trying to help get some words around this. So if you wanted to offer within six months to plant the remainder of the buffer along all of, or Chapel Ridge Road, and they got a condition, does that work? If, I mean, would that be?
Is there a mound there that's going to be there?
But it depends on how phase.
And if there, I mean, if there is an impact, it might be a single tree or small bush or something, but that's minor from their perspective, I would expect.
I'd like to see at least six.
If, if we can actually put the mound there during this, and we could do that in a short period of time, and then when the growing season comes in, we can start planting.
Install a, was it a berm part?
There is a, like, there is a berm. That's why I was just...
Is that, that's part of the landscape plan or the buffer plan?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
And so we can get a real head start on that. It would have some aesthetic clearance there.
Okay. Would, if the, I think it would be consistent with your direction if the berm is somehow finished as opposed to a mud pile, right? So if you're talking about whether it's mulched or...
You would probably have to be mulched or seeded.
Something like that.
Just so it doesn't erode.
Right. And, and to be clear for everyone, I'm not trying to drive us towards a particular decision. I'm just trying to wrap some words that staff is okay with, that the applicant can offer, so that we can be clear on what conditions are being offered. Do you have any feedback, Amanda?
Well, I would just say it needs to be date certain. If you're going to say six months, then it needs to be, I'm assuming that's six months from date of approval.
Okay.
And if there's going to be an exception for the installation of necessary utilities, then that be mentioned as well. Like, you know, that be allowed for any disruption for installation of utilities as necessary.
Yeah. I think we could start planning in September, so we can certainly get it done.
All right. Well, I think, I think from the condition and Mr. Gazarovski's offering, if I can help do that, would be to, let's pick December 1st as a target to be done with berm and landscaping, and that some disruption from utilities would be allowed as long as it's repaired. And if you're willing to make that offer as a condition, then I think I see Ms. Bunce jotting that down.
Yes, I do.
Councilman Jensen, does that address your question?
You did a good job there.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you. Okay. So we have, we have that condition, so that's, we have closed on Sunday condition. I think I forgot to write down the second one.
The exclusiveness.
Oh, yes. One, one...
One beauty salon.
Barber beauty. All right. And then six months for buffer installation. For the entire length of Chapel Ridge. Since you had the floor to last, did you have anything else?
Done.
Okay. All right. Any other council members?
So for me, we heard a lot of concerns, and aesthetics is one of those for the current park, you know, so I wanted to ask you for some responses to the concerns brought tonight and how you will address some of their concerns for what exists there now.
We, it's my understanding, we actually answered all of their concerns. I'm not sure what Ms. Boykin is talking about. We've actually, if, if there's any kind of issue that, that is out there, the town of Apex calls us immediately, within that same hour, and in, within, shortly thereafter, that particular issue is mitigated. And so I'm not really understanding what those issues that she's speaking of, because we haven't, I mean, the, the site is still in a condition that's approved by the town of Apex inspectors. And, but we, I can tell you also, as Amanda stated, that if there's ever an issue that's out there, then we're out there mitigating it with my general contractor. We didn't realize that the, that the, the right-of-way needed to be mowed, but since some of the folks in the neighborhood said that it looked messy, we started mowing it. And, but that wasn't a condition that was forced on us by the town to do that, but we did it anyway. We did it across the street also to, and we'll continue to do that, to try to mitigate any concerns. If we, we even had power washers out there on the road during the muddy season, power washing the roads daily to make sure that the mud was off the road. We had contractors sweeping the, the stone. Now, we can't get it every day, but we try to do it as much as we can in reason to try to pull all of the mud and the stone off of the road. And I think we've done a good job. If we, again, if we haven't, then I know the town of Apex would give us a call and say, you know, do this and do that, and but, and when they do that, we do, we do mitigate that particular situation.
So do you not have anything you wish to offer based on what you heard this evening? So for me, you know, I would love to see if there are responses you have to their concerns, but you feel you've addressed them already, but they used...
If someone, if someone, if Ms. Boykin called me and said that she's, she's displeased about that, we would take care of it.
Seems there's been a communications issue, too, and that's, that's something that concerns me. So they mentioned not being to hear back from you all on a concern.
We've never, we've never seen it.
Hold on. And then your, the gentleman here who spoke said he came and corrected himself, thank you for that, to say he had not responded. So I think that if their communication could get cleared up, especially with the applicants, really, because I think even them talking to the neighbors seems like would probably be a better communication, just the way they responded and presented themselves today. So I just think that some of this could be cleared up if people felt like they were more heard and valued, and there was communication that was better. That's my two cents.
Thank you. We're open to it.
I guess I have a follow-up. Amanda, I think I asked you this a little bit ago, but we heard a lot of accusations. Is there any, are they in violation of anything on their site?
I'm not aware of anything as of today. I'm not always copied on emails that are related to solar erosion and sedimentation control issues. That goes directly to that department. Responses are handled between the contractor and that department, and usually, planning is not always involved or in those email strings, because it's not within our, our purview. But as of today, I am not aware of anything personally.
Mr. Havens, you mentioned that you had gone and taken some pictures. I think we had an email exchange and a response from, from you that we had gone out there and looked regarding the erosion, since planning might not be involved in that. Was there any issues with that?
There were none. There was some minor remediation they needed to do that was directed by the, our lead environmental specialist, but there was no violation found. And that was, that was an email that the whole council got. I went out there within about an hour and a half and took those pictures so the council could see what I was seeing. I'm not an expert in code enforcement, so I dispatched soil and erosion control environmental specialist and asked our lead code enforcement person from Diane's department to go out and take a look, to see what violations they could find, and they did not find any.
Amanda, I have another question for you. Is this, I've, we've seen a couple of these rezonings on various developments, adding a use bag because of whatever reason. Do you have a count on, I mean, I know it doesn't happen every meeting. Do you have a count on how many maybe we've done in the last couple of months or year? I feel like there was one at 540 that just happened that we did at 540 blocks.
There was a change to a fence condition, and I don't recall if it involved, that, that project has had a couple of amendments in its lifespan. One was to add a couple of uses a few years ago, and then they recently had another to adjust a couple of conditions. It's not completely uncommon, but the majority of our cases are not amendments to existing conditions.
And we do have the condition that there will be only one salon.
The developer has agreed to that. I have that in the, in the list.
Any other comments from council?
I have a comment. So we've heard concerns tonight about mowing, about aesthetics, about lighting and things like that, and to me, this is part of being a good neighbor as a developer. Those concerns shouldn't have to wait until the town of Apex gets involved before you actually address them in being a good, a good neighbor. So whenever someone is reaching out and saying, "We're having a problem with lights. We're having a problem with them not taking care of their property via mowing," or whatever it is, if it has to reach the level of the town of Apex getting involved before anything is done, that tells me a lot. So I am concerned about that. No offense to, to the lady and gentleman who want to open their salon, there are other places to open salons. So I'm just, I'm concerned about how this has all gone down, and...
All right. Anything else? Is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Is there a second? And just to be clear, there were three conditions that we've added today.
Yeah, with, yeah, with the added.
So closed on Sunday was number one. The, read my writing. Oh, the limit to one barber and beauty shop for the entire project or site, and then the six months to install the buffer, which would be actually December 1st, I think, is what we went with. So that, you're okay with those three?
That's...
Okay. And there was a second that I hear?
With those conditions, I'll, I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for approval with those conditions. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I would like to say before we make our final vote on this, that, you know, here we have a small business owner who's been in Apex a really long time, who decided to do something different with some property, and from the Triangle Business Journal article that was made, they made a $15 million investment in our town to build an office park, and there's an opportunity within this office park for another small business owner to open their business, and I just think this, this impact is going to be very minimal. As somebody stated, the Chapel Ridge is already a cut-through, as was predicted three years ago when we had the original rezoning meeting. There's a church going in at the end of the cul-de-sac. You know, things, things change, and, you know, it's a ride the wave and, and make your money and, and sell and, and be okay with the change and be acceptable, and these, these are awesome developers, they're doing a great job complying with everything that we've asked, so I hope that, I hope you guys will approve this.
Hang on. Shh. Did you finish?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
I hope we'll approve this tonight.
All right. Thank you, councilman. Any other thoughts on the motion?
Yeah, I can go next. Since I was on the council here when this came up, and I was one of the two people who did not want this proposal and on this project, and voted no at that time, so I just want to put that out there. I did not feel it was appropriate at that time, the polls that was in front of me. You know, a couple of things I am disappointed about with this. I'm disappointed that we have questions and there's no, you know, there's no answers for them, that, you know, that there is evidence that there, as a courtesy, that in good faith, that uses were pulled out, and so that creates an expectation for people. And so then we, and we sat here in this council before and discussed pulling something like a microbrewery, putting back, something back in, and that engineer said, "Well, I don't want to do that because I gave the person my word." And so we got to figure out what we're going to do if someone had, as a courtesy and in good faith at the time, 2016, said, "Okay, I'll remove this." But then the council can go back and put that in. What message are we sending if we continue to do that? I am really disappointed that, you know, and thinking about the, the developer side of this, about those comments were saying, "I'm not a, I'm not a professional developer. I'm not, you know, I'm not, this is not my thing. I don't know. I'm advertising." Well, I would like to see some of the advertisement to see if you are advertising for those things, but I feel really disappointed that there was an expectation created amongst this couple, the Weavers, that this would work without, you know, really coming and looking and seeing whether this would work. And so that I'm really disappointed and saddened about how this has gone down, and I think it could have been done better, and I do think that there should have been better communication. I think things could have been better, and I don't know whether one salon makes it better for them or not. I don't know. So I now have to go with my gut about my disappointment about, it's really messy and it needs to be cleaned up.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion for approval?
I think, maybe I'll chime in a little bit. So I was there in 2016, kind of by accident. My neighborhood was fighting a bridge, and I went to the planning board meeting, which I thought was a, a big fat mess, and I would, I would think after seeing that in 2016, seeing that what happened there, that the developer would bend over backwards to try to minimize the impacts, because it was controversial, and I remember being like, wow, this is, this is pretty serious. I don't, didn't see that happen in, in the preceding three years, and in the planning board meeting, it was kind of not, not great, and the oversight, you know, that's your job. It's not, there's, you can't have oversight when it's your job, and, you know, you, people need to learn the code, you know, everywhere that code, because that's, that's what it's all about, so that's why I'm, I'm voting no.
I guess I would just add, I'm disappointed that it doesn't look like this is going to go through. We've all talked about adding business to Apex, and, and this is just making it that much more difficult.
All right. If there's an objection, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. All right. That fails by a vote of two to three. Are there any final thoughts that anyone?
Do you mean make a motion to deny, or is that...
Oh, I think that, do you, do you need one? That can, that can serve as one, so. Okay. All right. Well, that concludes public hearing number three, and I'll pause here to give people a chance to, to go. Does anybody need a very short recess?
Please.
All right. We're going to take a two-minute recess. Thank you.
...........................
That's enough, sir. Thank you.
Yeah. This is the rabbit park in Jersey. That's exactly where it's got it. Yeah, really nice.
We're on recess, yes.
You've got your right in here. You've got me.
No. You can relax.
Yes.
They've been out twice. Definitely in Washington. I'm curious. Nothing, nothing ever has gotten us other than, I think you're turning over. I received from those parents, actually, because the market's like, you know, so many guys, like, for example, like, yeah, so, so, like, there's, like, markets, because I noticed that, I don't know, he was going to hand, or they got, you know, and that's quite well, and, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, in years, he knows, everybody that's part of the neighbors, in America, that he knows.
Wow.
And where you all from?
Yes, Maya. Yes, Maya.
Okay. Okay. I'm from DC, from, I can sort of, Yankee, sort of, like, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're civilized in the place, right? I used to come over here, I do. I, I, I'm actually very old. My name's, I'm just, I just come here just to, 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 So a windmill would not fall under how we have solar energy system defined.
Okay. There's probably height requirements anyway for that, I would guess, right?
Well, accessory structures have to be subordinate to the principal structure, so we would not see anything taller than the principal building on the property. And Planning Board heard this on June 10th, both amendments, and recommended unanimously recommended approval of both. Staff does recommend approval as well.
All right, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing and close it because no one signed up, so I'll refer the matter to council for possible motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. There is no old business. We have one unfinished business item. This is the possible motion for environmental stewardship award program, and I'll turn the floor over to council member Bill Jensen.
Thank you. Well, this has been a long time coming. It's been about a year or so, so staff has taken a look at it. They've done an outstanding job as far as I'm concerned. It fits exactly what I wanted to see. Council has had the opportunity to read it. If you have any problems with it, obviously it's your opportunity, but I, I think it's, I think it will work just fine.
All right, and just to be clear, you're asking for council to recommend adoption or approval of this program?
Yes.
All right. Any questions or comments for Councilman Jensen?
I guess I have a question for you or maybe for staff. It talked about the, being kind of being presented at one of the council meeting possibly. This could get, like, to be a pretty long list, so is there, are we thinking we're going to kind of have them all in one, kind of, every once in a while have a big group of people if they want to come?
Correct.
Okay.
We would, we would time it so you don't have one every month. We would try to group them. If people even want the award to be presented in public, they may just want, hey, thank you, and we'll give them the.
And that'd be communicated, like, via maybe an invitation if they want to come to a meeting?
Yes.
Come with their award? Okay.
I have a question, and I know I've seen this, and I've edited it, but something that I thought about is down in category three for the Apex High School's environmental clubs. Do you think it needs to be narrowed to that? Do you think that it could be other clubs, just like Apex High School clubs? Because there could be other clubs that have.
I'm good with that. I, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish what you're going to say.
I was done, yeah, that have environmental goals. Maybe we should take out environment, and I didn't catch this before when we were working on this.
I, I'm fine with it. I didn't put that in in the first place.
Oh, okay.
I just went with it. I thought you had done that.
Wait a minute. Which, which thing are you suggesting?
So under category three, it says to this end, we will buy Apex High School's environmental clubs, but there could be clubs to do a lot of environmental good, but they might not be called an environmental club.
Okay.
It could be any club that's doing.
Environmental work, so I don't know how to, like, environmental focus clubs or whatever it is, to make it clear.
No, I. It's lowercase, though. It's inclusive of any club that might want to tackle.
Yeah, yeah.
In his lowercase, too, not like environmental club.
Yeah, I just don't know if it's clear.
Well, is.
For me, it is kind of, but I thought about it, could be misinterpreted, like, environmentally focused clubs or something like, I don't know.
Was there also a reason we excluded, like, the middle school clubs possibly, too?
This was the, the notes in the directions. The notes in the directions I received from council. We can strike the word environmental, and we can say Apex School Club.
Schools, clubs. There you go.
That way we.
It's clunky.
I know, like, schools and Apex who have clubs. Because someone's like, this is only Apex High School. No, it's Apex High School's club, yeah.
Okay.
We'll let Drew work.
Thank you.
Are you okay with that?
That's it.
All right.
Okay.
The award is a plaque or like a framed paper, like eight by ten or something, says environmental stewardship award.
Yeah, but it can be different sizes for the very large systems like Target put on. We might well want to, and that's up to staff to select sizes in effect, but have a larger.
Bio-degradable. It should probably deteriorate in 20 years or so.
We may need, we need to maybe budget something if we want to give, like, fancier things to fancier projects, I guess.
Well, we could.
Maybe we'll see what happens first. Yeah, okay.
See what the uptake is.
Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and, a motion to approve stewardship award with the suggested wordsmithing and direct staff to determine the appearance of the certificate or award.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And Councilman Jensen, did you have anything you wanted to?
I have nothing else to say.
Okay.
Councilman, you didn't get the motion.
Pardon me?
You didn't get the motion, if anything.
Well, that's fine.
We were on the committee together. We worked on this together.
It's enough for notoriety.
All right. Any, any, any discussion on the motion for approval? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously, and we now move to new business number one. This is a possible motion for a policy for town of Apex employees. So I'll also turn the floor over again to council member Bill Jensen.
Okay. Actually, I'm going to pull this request for tonight with the, but have a request to staff to, to study to see why IBM can have different lengths of times for males and females, and I believe Governor Cooper set his up for four weeks for males, eight weeks for females. I'd just like to find out why they can do it and we cannot. That's all.
Okay, so the request is not to consider this for a motion tonight, but to instead, I'll take what you said as a motion to request staff to research this for why some organizations, and I'll just use that generally.
And do, get them.
And, and the governor, is that, you said, you named Governor Cooper?
I had those two as examples.
Examples, okay. IBM and Governor Cooper as examples.
They have something like 12 and 20 weeks.
Okay, to research that and find out what's the background for the difference.
Because we currently have some court decision that says we're not supposed to, but obviously that doesn't apply to the governor or to IBM.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second to ask staff to research this? Okay, we have a second.
Can I respectfully make a request as well? That we, we had implemented the paid family leave policy 18 months ago or so, that we get some stats on, you know, how well it's been used, if the full time has been used, and the like.
Okay, look, since we have a motion and a second, let me see if that's accepted as a friendly amendment or if that's a separate item. The, the request was.
I'm fine.
Okay. All right, you heard it? Okay, good. You okay?
I have a friendly amendment also.
Yeah, I do, too. Go first.
So, you know, in the spirit of sort of the baby steps we started with, with the paid parental leave, getting at equity that both parents are what most children, what we want children to have if possible, even if it's parental figures, to improve child health outcomes and child quality of life. So, but I realize that we don't always, we're not just taking care of children, we are often taking care of parents, and so, so while we're having research done, I would like to see us have research for future caregiver-style leave plans so that people who may have to take care of parents can, you know, can maybe be able to enjoy on some more benefits if they have those kind of, those responsibilities. So I'd like to ask for staff to research that as well.
The bereavement leave, is that what you're referring to?
No, I said, no.
Other caregivers.
Other caregivers, so if you don't.
Non-parental?
Non-parental, so if you have, you know, you may not have children, or you may have children and parents, or you may have, you may have a spouse, you may have a military spouse who you have to care for, this paid parental leave would not deal with that, but certainly caregiver leave would, and so I'd like to have a friendly amendment to add to, for staff to research that for the staff and how that would, if that would incur or help staff with having an additional benefit in the future.
All right, Councilman Jensen, it's your motion.
I have the friendly.
Okay, hang on, we got to deal one at a time.
I'm good for all the friendlies.
Okay, Councilman Moyer, you were the second.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Councilman Gant?
The friendly on top of the friendly on top of the friendly. I like, I really like committees, that's kind of weird phrase, but I'd like this to go to the personnel committee after the staff researches it, and then they make a recommendation to, to the council as a whole. That way they can dive deep into it first.
All right, so the recommendation is to send the, for staff to send the results to personnel committee first.
Yes, and one set of results I am particularly interested in is how many of the moms or dads, new moms or dads have taken sick leave in excess of the six weeks that, that have been given to them? Because that's a, a non-zero, or that's a noticeable fraction, I think that would be indicative of the need potentially to make it eight or more weeks.
Okay.
But I'd like that, that'd be part of that report. You sent me some numbers, but that one wasn't in there, and I'd like, I'd like that number.
Okay.
All right, so Councilman Jensen?
Well, if there's no more friendlies, I'd go with that.
All right, okay. And Councilman Moyer?
That's it.
All right, so we, we have several friendly amendments to this, and I'll review what I wrote so we can make sure we're all on the same page. The request was made to staff to research specifically as examples IBM and Governor Cooper's policies, or at least recommendations for that. In addition, how is the current leave policy working? If I could shorten it to something like that. In addition, to research non-parental caregivers as part of that, and also for the results, oh, sorry, if I take the second one first, to, to have personnel maybe provide statistics on who's using additional time beyond the current policy as a, maybe an indicator, and then to have the, all of these results go to the personnel committee before it comes to council. There, get everything? You got, does that match what you had?
Yes, sir.
All right, there's our motion, and we've had discussion, but is there anything final anybody wants to add to it?
I don't have a long personnel committee meeting, that's what I know.
All right. All right, if there's no objection, I'll call for the vote. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Next is new business number two. New business number two is a possible motion for the creation of Bee City USA Committee, and that's me. So, I'm not surprised. I just sounded like it just now.
I was going to say.
So, and, and as a background, we've had discussions before about honeybees, and, you know, honeybees are very, very necessary for pollination, but then there's also other pollinators. There are other bees, and there are butterflies and other insects that go from flower to flower, and very important for pollination. And my two minutes in the spotlight, I was a honeybee keeper when I was a teen. I had my own hive, I collected my own honey, I entered it into the NC State Fair, and I won first place in my age group. Thank you very much.
That's why I got in state.
The secret, oh yeah, the secret was, the secret was double filtering to get the wax out. I do, I did acquire 28 bee stings in my life doing that, so I've, I've taken my lumps quite literally.
Nice.
Yes, but now with all that as interesting background, many of you know we've, you know, pursued Tree City, and we were able to work with the organization that defines what that is. We followed all the details, checked all the boxes, we applied, and we were awarded Tree City USA status. There is the same thing for Bee City USA. Bee City means that you do things that are, if I can be general, friendly to bees, which can include what type of plants you choose in landscaping, what, where plants go, who can have bees and where they can have them, and to be a little bit more tolerant of that. Also, when it comes to things like pesticides and other things, that we take that into consideration, limit their uses, or at least understand the impacts if we have to use them. As you know, you know, there are times where we do have to use them, right? You know, when kudzu's taken over something, it's really hard to get rid of, and it is a invasive species. With that said, my recommendation here, and hoping the council would go along, would be to simply create a Bee City USA Committee. The question before you, I'm not trying to solve the problem for you, so as a council, you can decide, do you want to have a standalone committee? Would you like to make it a subcommittee or something else? But creating the committee is one of the things that helps us move towards being certified as a Bee City USA city. Now with that said, I will also add that North Carolina leads the way in states in terms of Bee City towns and cities, and I would love nothing more than to see Apex put our name right there on that, to be friendly to honeybees. Honeybees are, are friends, and I never would have thought that when I was 10, but when I had my own hives for a while, I realized just how, they're actually pretty docile creatures. It's only when you step on them or slap them that they turn around and sting you. Most times, they're, they're good. So the question for council is, how do you want to create a committee for this? Assuming you want to, if you don't want to, I understand, but I thought I'd just kind of toss that out there and see if anybody has any thoughts.
I think a standalone would be the easiest personally.
And I also, does the Bee City organization have guidelines about, should it be standalone? Or is that one, is that one optional?
We just have to have, we have to have an advisory committee essentially that helps to provide feedback, and when staff go to do, just like the Tree City, when staff go to do a few things, if they want some feedback from a committee, and the committee would be made up of reasonably interested people in bees and pollinators for our town, then they would provide the feedback back to staff, so that serves a bit like Tree Board does for Tree City USA.
And I'm fine with whatever the pleasure of the council is. I'm happy if the, sort of the Tree City, Bee City work a little bit, no, that rhymes, a little bit together, kind of, you know, along with the environmental committee over to the side, if that's a help to them. Also, I, I think some of the education that can be provided through this committee and through the Tree City, and some of the questions that come up, like, what's the best plant to X and Y? I think I would love to see more, a page with some more information, like the glossary of terms that we created through the environmental committee, like what 100 years' storm really means, and things like that. I'd like to see some more education related to that as well.
And we can certainly hand that mission to the, the committee and work, have them work with staff, yeah.
That's part of the whole, the whole Bee City effort is to, is a lot about public education, to your point.
Yeah. Accessible.
Sorry, I, sorry.
No, no, no.
I was going to your friendly amendment, but maybe it's just, if we're talking about educational right now, I would like to charge this committee with an additional thing, a list in the, at the end, to look at the appropriateness and location, possible locations, and budget of a educational beehive on a town building or town property, or more than one.
Like in the museum where they have like the glass wall that you can see them in?
Yeah.
Okay. Or out in a park.
The nature park might be a really good place.
And I know this company, Bee Downtown, started by an NC State student, is, is, I think, a good candidate to collaborate with that kind of project. They've worked with a lot of, you know, companies that have, especially in RTP, that have big properties that they have beehives now, and they've installed, and they maintain them, so it's a, it's a good organization, I think, to possibly get involved with.
So does this mean we can't, like, swap bees and treat them unkindly?
Correct. That means you cannot.
Sorry, kid, I can't get that.
You can lift it carefully and put it outside. Yes?
True.
Any other thoughts from anyone?
I'll tell you, I, I, I thought Bird City would be really good, too, but, you know, if we're going to have a Bee City, depending on the birds, the, the.
We're going to have a Bird City Committee?
Well, the bees could feed the birds.
Oh, I see.
That's not where he was going.
We may have to keep the bees and the birds separate.
City of the birds and the bees.
Yeah.
So, motion to approve the creation of a Bee City USA Committee.
All right.
I will second that.
All right.
As a standalone.
Oh, as a standalone committee?
All right.
Thank you.
Discussion on the motion to approve? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, thank you very much. Look forward to that, and I think, sorry, were you going to? I was going to say, I think you'll be following up with me on appointments and.
So, that's a question I got to ask, so we will do a announcement that this committee is being established, there'll be an interest form that.
Yes, I think we should just go right straight through every process that we have for it being a committee that people can express interest in.
And we'll contact, we, staff is aware of some folks that are in town that are beekeepers that have a real interest in this, and some folks that are very in tune with pollinator-friendly flowers and that kind of stuff, so we'll ask them if they would mind filling out the interest form for.
They can let their friends know or whatever, generate some buzz.
Nice.
Oh, my gosh.
Is it, no, it's not 11 o'clock yet.
Yeah.
All right.
Just started feeling like.
Thank, thank you all. We'll now move to new business number three. This is adoption for resolution, and I turn the floor to council member Killingsworth and also Dozier.
So, currently, US population statistics for the, the US in 2017 was around 4.5% that identify as LGBTQIA. The latest statistics I found in North Carolina was in 2012, and the percentage was around 3.5%. That translated to around 250,000 North Carolinians in 2012. Our population has changed dramatically from then to the current date, so who knows what the percentage is currently. What I do know is this population, of which I'm a member, should be recognized. Our diversity is a strength, and each, every one of us is different, and those differences should be celebrated. Thank you for considering this resolution.
Whereas individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual celebrate Pride Month or LGBTQIA Pride Month nationwide each year in the month of June, and whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the events that took place 50 years ago at the Stonewall Inn in New York City on June 28, 1969, and is often viewed as the beginning of the modern LGBTQIA rights movement, and whereas it is important during this month to take the time to reflect on the LGBTQIA rights movement, and whereas LGBTQIA people in the town of Apex have made and continue to make vital contributions to the community, and.
Whereas LGBTQIA Americans have achieved significant milestones, ensuring that future generations of people in the United States will enjoy a more equal and just society, and whereas despite extraordinary progress, LGBTQIA Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are, and whereas the town of Apex stands with the LGBTQIA community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all, and whereas the town of Apex will continue to advocate for protections for all LGBTQIA individuals to make our town a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the town of Apex recognizes June 2019 is LGBTQIA And I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Is there a discussion?
I have a couple of questions, maybe this is to the town manager. Do we, when people apply for positions at the town of Apex, do they have to reveal their sexual orientation?
Absolutely not.
Do you know of any instances in Apex, because this is what we're here to serve as the citizens of Apex, where a member of this community has been discriminated against by a town employee, police, or?
I have no empirical data, one way or the other, on that. I don't know.
Okay, not sure. No complaints have been filed to the town about mistreatment?
None have reached my office.
So, I'm a bit challenged with this, not in the sense of having a pride, I think whatever, however you live your life is great, it's fine, it's, it's of no concern to me. I just think we need to stay focused as a council on things that are relevant to the town of Apex, and we seem to keep doing these things that don't have much relevance to the town of Apex, so I'm, I'm not going to support this, not because of my bias towards any group of people, but just because I don't think this is relevant to what we need to be focused on here, the, the town of Apex. And in conjunction with that, I'd like to have a bit of a process for future resolutions. We were emailed, all of us, last week on Thursday, from a citizen of Apex expressing their support of this on the future agenda for Tuesday, and the agenda had not even come out yet. So, something is going on behind the scenes to try to stir something up in citizenry to email us, and we don't even know it's on our agenda. So I think it's a common respect between all of us up here that if we have something that we're passionate about and that we'd like to have a resolution for, that we have some sort of process, or at least at, at a baseline, a, a common respect for all of us that serve up here to be made aware of, of kind of what's coming on the agenda, and not a random email from somebody, but.
So I'll respond to, I'll respond to some pieces of that. I'm not aware of a policy that any person in the governing body has to make anyone aware of anything. We don't, I don't think that there's a policy that says we have to be responsive when people ask us, so if someone did approach one of the council members about this, about Pride Month, I don't think there's a policy that says we have to be responsive. I, so, and there are things on the agenda tonight that I was not made aware of until the agenda hit it, and so I didn't call that individual or text him and say, you know, I wasn't aware of this when it was, you know, something that's, that I'm passionate about, so, and I'm up here ready to discuss it. So I think while some things may, it's always great to be responsive, and it's always, and it's always a plus, maybe if you do have time or want to discuss things with people, but it's not a policy unless someone makes it policy.
Can I speak to experiences of potential discrimination?
Um, that would be inappropriate at this time. We're deliberating under new business.
I, I think, I'm planning to vote for this, I think it's a great, it's a great first step. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned during the human trafficking discussion that we started with a proclamation, and then you said. a proclamation, and then you said, oh, well, we need to do more, because it's symbolic, but there's more can be done. I think, I'd like to see it with this, to be honest, I think events, many municipalities have events during this Pride Month that are educational and supportive of this community, and so I think that would be a good next step, and maybe for next year, because we're kind of getting to the end of the, it's hard to plan anything now, but for, for next year, if we want to do this, maybe have a little bit of preparation, then have some events, because I think it'd be, I think it'd be well, well received by the community and the, the citizens in this, in this, in this group of people.
And I think related to that, though, we, you know, we had Black History Month, we had Women's History Month, and so, you know, we say in there, this is commemorate, you know, this, this, this time in history, and so that means go out and do something, you know, like with Think Apex Day. But if we're not, as a town, going out and doing something, like you said, then where people may not be motivated. So, for Black History Month, I would have to go to Kerry, and, and that's fine, I have, but I appreciated that there were people here on this council who said they wanted to do that, to honor, you know, a piece of my heritage, quite frankly.
Yeah, I, I read an article about Hendersonville today, a pride parade, and the article was about some citizens that didn't like it very much, but it, that started from an outside group, and they interacted with the mayor and the town of Hendersonville, and got that going. So, I think there's a process, yeah.
Yeah.
And other, other ones too. I think there was that thing in the library about the history of African, African American history in Apex, I think it was a good event that, maybe that's a good town sanction thing for February as well, for next year.
Yeah, right. And if I, we were doing everything, I would want to, tomorrow's Juneteenth, does anyone know what Juneteenth means? I'm someone that, you know, was, so that impacts a big part of my background, but I'm not asking for a resolution for people to learn about Juneteenth.
It'll probably be next week.
Excuse me?
I said it'll probably be next week. Seems like with the way we're going with all these resolutions.
What does that mean? So, are you, are you saying that Juneteenth related to slavery?
I'm saying, I'm sure there'll be a resolution soon, this Dozier, that you want to bring forward.
Okay, well, I think that's.
And I probably will hear about it from a citizen before I find out it's on the agenda Tuesday.
I would ask, I would ask the mayor, since I was speaking respectfully, I would ask the mayor to please help people, you know, I'm trying, I don't, I don't want to be going back and forth, I want, I want to be in the, you know, active within the dignity of my seat, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, I was, this is something that's dear to me, so to, to, to make a joke about Juneteenth is, is disrespectful to my heritage, and I, and I do not appreciate that.
Well, I'll, I'll say a couple of things, and being one of the yes votes for the Equal Rights Amendment, and to be consistent anyhow, I would, will be voting for this, I think it's important that, and it's not just the town staff or the town functioning, it's the town as a whole that we need to be more compassionate with other people, and for that reason, I'm going to vote for it.
Any other discussion before I call for the vote? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
All right, that passes four to one. We now have before us an opportunity to go to closed session. This is to preserve attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? All right, we're now going to closed session.
Okay. All right, before we, before we finish, just a couple of quick things. One, I just want to say, it was a snarky comment, and I think you took it different from how he meant it, because I heard it completely different, but with that said, I would like us to move forward. I do, if, if it's okay with everybody, I prepared something I'd like to read related to resolutions. I'm prepared to do it or not, depending on whether you're willing to hear it, it's after 10 o'clock. See my line? Do it. Okay. So, I believe it is not our job as a town council, elected to nonpartisan seats, to continue passing resolutions at the municipal level that are divisive and create enmity, often among and along party lines, when we're supposed to be a nonpartisan council focused on good governance for all our citizens. This past February, like we have every Fri- February, at the annual retreat, we developed a set of priorities, such as traffic planning, downtown planning, public safety, parks, greenways, expansion of infrastructure, better growth planning that addresses the missing middle, and an activity center for seniors. These are things that our constituents expect and demand of us. Despite my requests for the council to focus on these important issues of the town and to follow our established priorities, this past year, we've instead been sidetracked by resolutions that, resolutions after resolutions declaring things, resolutions which, in my opinion, accomplish very little, except to shine a spotlight on ourselves for what I perceive to be magnanimous statements in recognizing different groups of people, resolutions which serve, in effect, and as we've seen tonight, to draw and wedge between people who have different opinions on these issues. So, part of my rhetorical question is, where, where do we draw the line? Which people groups get their own months of celebration, and which ones don't? If you purport to be inclusive, then who will not make the cut? Who will not get a month? We can't resolve our way to a moral culture, and trying to do so, in my opinion, steers us out of our lane as nonpartisan council members. I implore you to ask yourself this question: Do I care about being a functional council, being part of a functional council that solves problems for citizens of Apex, or is it more important to proffer resolutions that, in my assessment, are virtue signaling, they distract us from our primary tasks of good governance, and they divide us, what seems to be into factions? When being inclusive of some means being exclusive of others, what has truly been accomplished? Again, these are rhetorical questions. I've worked very hard, in my opinion, to lead this council by example in a nonpartisan, problem-solving manner. I desire for this council to work together, to be functional, and focus on addressing municipal issues. So, my ask of this council, please, let's leave what are partisan and divisive issues outside, and come together, not just as a council, but as Apexians, solving Apex problems. Let's stop putting up resolutions that merely score political points with a partisan base, and get back to doing our job of addressing the problems of traffic, and growth planning, and jobs, and downtown, and quality of life. But failing that, my request is to make a good faith effort to gain full support of all the council members before another resolution shows up on the agenda. If anyone would like to discuss this with me at a later date, because you don't understand where I'm coming from, or you'd like to find out what I mean by all this, please reach out to me this week, I'd love to get together. That's a prepared statement I had. I don't intend to create a dialogue or an argument, but I would be more than happy to discuss that with anybody at any time. If there's nothing else, then we will adjourn. All right, thank you.